Welcome everyone this evening. I'm going to walk through the procedures we're going to follow this evening and then we'll get started. So again, good evening. This is the regularly scheduled May 9th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I am joined by Rebecca Holman, Michael Slivka, Ben Evans, John Mead, and I have City Attorney Scott Fitson, Mayor T. Wright, Community Development Director David DeGroot, City Planner Mike Bucy, and Assistant Planner Jesse Muncie. Planning and zoning commission meetings air live at Geneva Broadcast Network, which can be viewed on Comcast Channel 10, ATT U-verse Channel 99, MetroNet Channel 93, or the city's YouTube channel. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing on Agenda 5A. As Chairman of tonight's meeting, I'll guide the public applicants and Commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing and the applicant will provide an opening statement and a brief overview of their request. Commission members will then have the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by public comment and testimony regarding the request. Audience members will be called on and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has not already been made or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from bearing off-topic and direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. Following the end of the public testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to comprehensively answer questions and respond to any comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may be stated by the Commission. Public hearing will then be closed, followed by Commission deliberation on separate requests. In order to help with the quality of the meeting broadcast, remind commissioners they mute themselves except when they are addressing the Commission. Commissioners are also encouraged to state their name prior to speaking or prior to providing roll call vote to better assist our record keepers, for example, yea, nay, or abstain. Okay? So if you wish to speak today, this evening, please stand and raise your right hand so I could swear you in. Do you sound like you swear to testimony you're about to give us the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Any questions on the procedures this evening? Harry Nun, Matt, the record. Whoops, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay. Anna, please call the roll.
Mead.
Mead here.
Evans.
Evans here.
Slivka.
Slivka here.
Holman.
Holman here.
Matoskill. Moran. Stocking.
Stocking here. Okay. So approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting is next on the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda, Slivka.
Second, Evans.
Move and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is approval of the minutes of the April 25th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Move to approve the minutes, Evans.
Second, Slivka.
Move and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, now we'll begin the public hearing. Public hearing 5A Venture Park. It's requests for, one, annexation; two, comprehensive plan amendment from commercial to industrial; three, zoning map amendment from RR Rural Residential to I-1 light industrial; and four, site plan approval for a 55.62 acre light industrial development. The applicant is One Venture Acquisitions LLC, and the location is PIN 12-12-300-071. And now, Matt, please do the record.
All right. So the contents of this file include an application for the annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, and site plan review filed by Venture One Acquisitions LLC dated April 12th, 2024, includes the following: project narrative, legal description, proof of ownership purchase agreement, a petition for annexation and rezoning, response to the zoning map amendment standards, the plat of annexation, preliminary site plan and conceptual site plan, Kirk Road perspective drawings, topographical survey, traffic impact study, the land use opinion application, and Kane County road improvement fee application, stormwater permit application, the preliminary engineering plans, preliminary landscape plan, tree preservation plan, preliminary stormwater management report, fire truck turning movement exhibit, site lighting and photometric plan, the natural resources inventory application, and the natural resources no report letter dated April 18th, 2024, the land use opinion report dated September 30th, 2022, the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, an affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on April 24th, 2024, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and finally, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated May 9th, 2024.
All right. Thank you very much, Matt. We're here for the applicant.
My name is Mark Good. I'm with Venture One Real Estate, Rosemont, Illinois. We had the pleasure to be here about a year ago, maybe a little over a year ago, on this project. And we basically are coming back with the same project. We've thought through some of the questions and comments that you had last time. We've been working with the owner for the last, you know, six to nine months to put it back under contract and move forward on this land and what we want to do here. So I'm going to make my effort to walk you through a little bit about Venture One and then about our project. We have 65 pages in our presentation. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm here to answer any questions you'll have, and we have information that we can go to that would hopefully provide data that you might need with your questions. So first question is, who is Venture One? Venture One was started approximately 24 years ago to be an industrial development company and an acquirer of industrial buildings. We have developed and have owned over those last 24 years, but really the last 10, 15 years, about 3,000 acres of land. A thousand of that is under our direct control, and then the other land is joint ventures with other partners. We have built just in the last few years over 16 million square feet of industrial space for a little over $1.5 billion. Most of that is in the Chicago area. We also have developments in Long Island and in Florida, and we're expanding in those areas as well. We have acquired buildings, you'll see in our package, deep in the package, we've acquired buildings for our funds in the, what we call the Fox River Valley area, all the way from Aurora up to Elgin, and continue to invest in this area and have bought buildings in the Geneva area. This is just a list, it's hard to read, of our business parks, but we have business parks that go from the Kenosha and Pleasant Hurry area of Wisconsin to Huntley, DeKalb, Rockford, University Park, Shawnee, Illinois, and really look to acquire sites anywhere from 30 to 40 acres all the way up to 500 acres. And most of the projects we do are buildings of somewhere between 250,000 square feet or greater. We've had the pleasure to work with such companies, as you can see on here, as Amazon, Scotts, Miracle-Gro. We just finished a building for Ryerson Steel, and these are all really good corporate clients that come into our business parks. We are not a developer of smaller buildings of 20,000 to 80,000 square feet. It's just something we're not really good at. We've done a few of those. We're really good at working with major corporations who want to move into a community and be a good community citizen, as do we. The property that we're talking about, and it is mentioned in your packet, is part of your southeast master plan. We're the red area here. We went through the plan and read it, and I think that one of the confusing things when we read it the first time is that it does talk in there about being used for commercial use. However, it very clearly states that depending on the situation, it could be either commercial or industrial, or a combination of both. The last time we were here, we didn't realize that. Could have been our mistake from just not reading it or not presenting it properly, but from our perspective, this does fit into your long-term comprehensive plan from the way we read the long-term comprehensive plan, and I'd ask you to, if you haven't read this paragraph or this within your plan, it does talk about both commercial and industrial. What it does say in there is that for purposes of the plan and placing a word on a map, they're only using commercial, but it does include industrial. I don't know why it's not actually inked. I mean, it doesn't take that much more space to say industrial, but they eliminated industrial from placing it on the map, and we found that when we read through it ourselves in great detail. So we do think it is part of your long-term plan to be a light industrial use in this area. This just gives you a map of where it is. From our perspective, you know, from a commercial use, you typically want to have a lot of residential right around you. People, you know, are used to not driving four, or five, or six miles to go to shop today. You have great, great, you know, commercial properties here in the region and in your town. We just don't think there's enough residences in this area to really support 57 acres of retail or commercial use here. Most of the land immediately around this property are either industrial, as you can see from the map, an airport, more industrial to the east. In fact, you just zoned and approved a TIF just east of here for a major industrial park that sits between us and the airport. So the idea of having a base of residential property owners here, either from Geneva or from other areas, that would shop in a 57-acre mall or big strip center, we don't think is probably going to happen. Now, I might be a little, you know, prejudiced on that because I'm an industrial guy and I shop a little bit, but I look at it and say, where are you getting your shoppers to come here? Will they really come to a major mall at this location? And we just provide information here of where is the population base, how close is it to this location for retail shopping, and we just don't see it as a potential use. So going forward, you know, this decade, next decade, and you look at what will happen in this location, the idea of it ever being residential, I think, not residential, commercial or retail is, I think, small, but I think there's a great opportunity to do a very nice corporate facility here at this intersection. I have my traffic engineer here and my civil engineer here. We've done a traffic study. We think that we are one of the least impactful zoning categories, and this project is for what could be on 57 acres. If you put a big commercial site here, there'd be people coming in and out all day long. Our traffic typically goes with trucks in the morning and the afternoon. Once people go to work, they're there for eight hours, not 10 hours, then they leave. So that from a traffic perspective to the area, we think we'd have the least impact of any type of commercial use that might be here. And that's what this next slide says as well, and I can have my traffic engineer speak in more detail to this if you need to. We've done 11 similar projects in the Chicago area in the last few years. We've also done a couple in New York. The most recent one that we've done in this area is we built a 750,000 square foot speculative building in Huntley, Illinois, just up Randall Road and just west on Randall Road in Huntley off of 47. We did two Amazon buildings there, big distribution buildings there a few years ago. There was a land site available, and we bought it, and we built a 750,000 square foot warehouse. We just leased 450,000 square feet of that warehouse to San Felipe and Nutt Company. They're in Elgin, right on the highway. They needed more space. They wanted to stay in the area from an employment perspective. So, you know, we tested the market with a larger building. We now have about 300,000 square feet left in the building, and we found a really great company that's helping them stay in the area, in the region that they're in, and expanding in that area. So we believe the same thing can happen here. There are a lot of industrial facilities east of here off of 64 and Carroll Stream, Glendale Heights. A lot of companies there have expanded into multiple facilities. It's very inefficient. A lot of them are in 200,000 to 400,000 square foot buildings. So when we look at this market and we say, what would be a good building here, we look at it and say, a building of this size, whether it's to one tenant or two tenants, we think would attract companies that are currently in the region, we call the Fox River Valley, or coming from Western DuPage where they want to consolidate and be in one facility and have a corporate facility right on Kirk and Fabian, where it's easy to get in and out of. You know, you're not stuck off some side roads where you're going through town to get to the facility. It's a very easy location for companies to locate to because they can go right on Kirk Road, go south, and get right on I-88. So we think that would be very attractive to major corporations. I'm not going to go through all of the buildings we lease and manage, but in the Fox River Valley, you can see the buildings owned and managed. This goes, I think, goes to 13 different buildings that we've had in the area from Elgin down to Aurora. We're a big believer in this. Up on Kirk Road, a few years ago, we built AGR's building in St. Charles. They're a company that was in St. Charles, wanted to stay in the area, they needed to grow, they were multiple facilities. Jeff, I forget the size of that building. It was like 100?
175,000.
175,000 square foot building. They ran a couple of buildings of 50,000, 60,000 square feet. They wanted to keep their employees, they wanted to stay in the area. There were no buildings that they could move to, so we built them a building right on Kirk Road, right just near the swim club up there in St. Charles. I'm sure you guys have been up there. So we're pretty proud of that, pretty proud of being able to develop in the area. So when you look at an aerial and you look at where we're at, what you can really see is just to the north and the south and the east of us is all industrial. Those are the rooftops that are there. And as we know, just a few months ago, Geneva approved the zoning and a fairly significant TIF for another developer to build an industrial park just east of us. And so we look at it and realize that Geneva has recognized that in this area of town, that this is probably a pretty good area for industrial. We don't believe we're going to compete with them. Our site is ready to go. We don't have to add any roads. We don't have to do much in terms of infrastructure. So we think we can get in the ground next spring and really start construction, you know, probably right after the first of the year next year. But we do think that we are complementing the immediate surrounding area that we are Just tell us a little bit about our project. And many of you were here before, so you know we're building a warehouse building, could have light manufacturing, we'll have corporate offices in there. Building will have 40-foot clear, it'll be cross-stocked, and I'll get to a site plan shortly. Right now. Our site plan requires the access on the Kirk Road. We think it's designed well for the access there. It may or may not require a light. We're prepared to put one in if signalization is warranted. We also have access that will come off of the southern edge of our property, if I have a way to point to it, off of Dawn Boulevard, that will go on the Fabian Parkway. So that will allow us to divide the building and have different users, have different access points for their trucks and their autos coming out of the site. We have truck docks on the east side of the site, and we have truck docks on the west side of the site, and offices can be in any one of the four corners, parking on either the north or south of the site. Conceptual, it'll be precast. Sometimes, depending on the user, we might put colors in that are more of their corporate colors, whether it's an Amazon or a 3M or Shanker that's blue, that we just did a large building for Microsoft in Shanker. But we'll try to have a design that we think really works well, but if a corporation comes to us and says, you know what, we'd like to put a dash of blue or red here from our corporate colors, we try to make it available to them in the way that we design the buildings. In this, we had our civil engineer do a site plan, we call it not a site plan, but a conceptual site view of the building because we are sitting off of Kirk Road. And if you look here, we are 450 feet from the road to our building. That's, you know, more than one and a half times a football field, you know? So we're pretty far away. If you imagine sitting in the end zone of a football stadium, can you really see what's going on in the end zone at the other end? We're one and a half times that. And in between the road and the building, we'll be putting in berming and alvegra and trees to really try to create a good sight line for our project. And this, someone mentioned that, will the people from Rook's be able to see our building? And if you look here, that's...
The distance on this is, if I find it correctly, over, I think, 1,000 feet?
Close to 600 feet? So a couple of football fields away. So, and again, it's an elevation. We're going up, we have trees, and anybody sitting at ground level, we don't think they'd see very much of the building at all. This is a view of what our building would look like with the trees and the berm in front of it on Kirk Road. Just some elevations. From our perspective, there are some competitive buildings in the market right now that are available for lease. We are fully confident that our competition will get leased because our building won't be available for probably 18 to 24 months. So during that timeframe, we think our competition will lease up. None of them are of a size that we are. They're a little bit smaller, so we think we have a niche that could really work. And the project that you just approved just east of us has one building that's a little bigger than ours and about the size, but most of them are smaller. And so we look at it and say that this is the size that's really needed in this area. There's very few buildings of this size here, and we do know there's corporations and users that could use them. Why are we interested in this area? Why do we like Fox River Valley? The vacancy rate currently is under 5%. Back in, you know, 10 years ago, it used to be in the 7, 8%. It was a slower market, you know? People didn't get used to it. They weren't out here. There wasn't as much development. But as people have moved into this area, commercial has developed in this area, amenities have shown up in this area. The market has gotten significantly better, buildings lease quicker. So in the last, you know, three years, our Fox Valley vacancy rate has been under 3% when a standard in the market in the Chicago area is, you know, over 4, 6%. So this market has been performed better than other markets in the overall Chicago And honestly, I can go into details on numbers, but I think that the graph said it all. You know, there is some development going on here, but that's because you've performed better, and there are users that want to be here and employ people from the area. I don't know that it's important for me to go into detailed schematics of our civil engineering. I'd be happy to do it with our civil engineer, but our basic plan would be to rezone this from the residential zoning that it is now to industrial one. We believe the long-term comprehensive plan for this area, recognized that a few years ago, and offered it as an alternative zoning. We think that if you stay at commercial, it'll be a long time before anything happens here, if ever. We do have the ear of the owner in terms of being under contract. He believes in our plan, and we would like to go forward. So with that, I'll end, and any questions you have, I'll be happy to answer them.
Scott, before we... Can you just take one pause? Sure. Just one, Matt.
Just a clarification, I'll ask, David, about the status of the TIP district and the development that you referenced, just so we're...
Sure.
It doesn't have anything to do with you?
I just saw it in the paper.
No, no, no. No, we just want to make sure that it's clear for everybody that's maybe watching.
Okay.
I think you stated that it was approved. It has not been approved yet. The plan is on file, but the public hearing for that project is on June 3rd.
Okay.
So it has not been approved yet.
And by the way, one of the reasons that we've been successful in our careers is that we believe a rising tide raises all boats. So momentum is important in a region, so I don't mind competition at all. I try not to directly compete, so I'm not directly competing with them with these buildings, with this building that we're building, because their building, building's a little smaller. But from my perspective, I wish them the best of luck, and obviously Geneva the best of luck, if you want it. From our perspective is that we're not trying to do four, or five, or six buildings. We got one building, one location. We'd love to build it. Obviously, we've got a commitment to the area from our fund side where we buy buildings in Geneva as well, so I appreciate the clarification.
Yeah. Thank you, David. All right. If there's nothing further, we'll see if there's questions from the commissioner. Yes, John.
Thank you again for your presentation. Just a clarification. At the beginning of your presentation, you stated that you're bringing the same project back, but you then also said that you've been working with the owner on some changes that you thought about from the last presentation nine months ago, and I just wondered, is there anything that you can articulate for us or note for us that we should pay particular attention to in noting what's difference between different...
Well, actually, I misstated. The changes are, is we went out of contract.
Okay.
And we went back in the contract.
Okay.
You know, so that's really, physically, the building hasn't changed.
So the project, the site plan, everything is the same.
The project is the same, but I might have misstated it verbally.
Yeah.
But we went out of contract. We've been working with him for eight months to go back under contract and his family.
Okay.
And we're back under contract, but nothing has changed in our plan and our design.
Okay. Question for staff. I think the plan, the staff report clearly says that the intersection will be signaled. Is that something we're looking to make a condition of, or is that just if it's warranted by KDOT or IDOT?
It's, I believe it's through KDOT's review, they have, you know, stated that a signaled intersection is required there.
Okay. So we can anticipate that would be signaled.
It has been reviewed by KDOT, and the signal would be required.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, from our perspective, we can't put in a signal in that's not warranted, and we've been working with Kane County as well, so...
All right. Thank you.
Just a follow-up on John's... Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And I'm not sure if you would have the answer to this.
I see a red thing there. Does that mean you're able to speak, or...
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know if... Red always means mute to me, so I wanted to... Sorry for interrupting.
The building that's technically in Batavia that is across the street, kind of catty corner from the restaurant, do you, does anyone know the square footage of that building? Or...
We have it, so...
I believe it's around 550,000 square feet.
And it's not complete yet, correct?
I mean, as far as I know, they are still, I think it's pretty close to being completed under construction, but that's as much as I know.
Okay. So I guess in reference to what you're saying about, you know, the things around you, potential with the competition, how would you see those, your building and that building, you're anticipating that that building would be filled by the time that yours was ready to go?
Well, I always think I build the best building, but that is a very nice building. From our perspective, it's 550,000 square feet. We think the market needs that building in the market. If we start a construction next spring, it takes us 12 to 15 months to finish it. So that's two years from today, and I sure would hope they'd be leased in the next two years. And I think there would be a void because not too many people are building buildings today in this market. There's some that have gone up, but the market's pretty strong in Chicago, and the vacancy rate out here is pretty low, and the demand for space here is from companies that are in the Fox River Valley, but also Western DuPage, and they have very little construction going on in Western DuPage because it's been all developed in Carroll Stream and Glendale Heights, so there's very few sites left. And there's definitely no sites left to do a building of this size. There's some sites that are in I-88 that are further west than DeKalb that can do a building of this size. Not much in Aurora is left. So we believe, and just a little history, is that companies are taking larger buildings with higher ceiling heights now because they have the technology to operate them efficiently. And their systems, their technology systems within the building save them a lot of money. So they're looking to consolidate rather than having, you know, two receptionists, two foremen, two this, two that. They can consolidate and operate more efficiently in a building of this size because of the technology that's out there today.
Scott, can I just... Another one? Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
So just to remind everybody, whether or not the site can be economically viable is not a factor that we would consider or that you should consider. It's not one of the elements for assessing this, so we can talk about, it's relevant that there's another building that's industrial in nature, but it, because that goes to what's in the neighborhood and so forth, but whether or not it's economically viable is, that's their risk and not our consideration.
That's correct.
Okay. I just had one more question. You presented a slide about the percentage of vacancy in Geneva kind of versus the Fox Valley area.
Is this the one you're talking about?
You said it was like under 3%.
Right, that's the fact. Here, I can get there.
Yep.
Yes, this is the Fox Valley versus Chicago.
I was just trying to figure out if that... I was just trying to figure out if that took into account the size of the, of the buildings, like, or just industrial buildings in general, like the, the smaller size?
This would be anything, I'm, I'm thinking in this study, it's anything from twenty thousand square feet and above. That's typically what the overall study does, doesn't go less than twenty thousand because those change really quickly.
So do you have a statistic about what sits vacant in your size range, I guess?
I, I can tell you that when we built our building in Huntley of seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet, there's not one building north of I eighty that was that size. So in I eighty, there was, there are some, that's where the intermodal is and everything else, we have some business parks there as well. But that's where the majority of those buildings were for the larger buildings. So we, we joint ventured that with a major financial institution, and we showed to them financially, that's the risk of, not for Huntley, but for us, you're right on that, that we felt that we'd rather be the only building of that size in an area to attract a, a quality corporation. Because anybody taking that size building has to be a good company, like San Felipe, we can lease our space. Versus being a three hundred thousand square foot building or a two hundred thousand square foot building where there were ten or fifteen of them in the area. So we're, we're rolling the dice, maybe it's a little roulette, saying we're putting our number, our, our bet on, on number thirty-five instead of, you know, odds or evens. But we also believe that in Chicago, it's the third largest industrial market in the country, on over one point five billion square feet of industrial space. And there are a lot of users that have grown in this market and taken multiple buildings and are looking to consolidate. And there's very few sites that can really accommodate that, and this is one of them. So it's sort of like a, I don't want to say, you know, a special site, but it is a special site because there aren't too many that can build buildings of this size in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners? All right, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
I don't think we necessarily need to list since this seems to be a, a small group, so who would like to speak first? I mean, gentlemen?
Good evening, commissioners. Name is David Walensiyak, East Side of Geneva, thirty-four-year-long resident. Not sure if that's a good thing. Number one, I'm not against the development of the East Side to bring in new revenue, but it has to be the right type of growth in the right location. I've previously been before this commission for both support, to both support and reject projects on the East Side. My involvement started when you got my attention with the Amazon, what we call Fiasco, across from the Geneva East subdivision. The whole time, my objective was to preserve a buffer zone, a transition area along the immediate Kirk Road corridor, stretching from Division on the north to Fabian on the south end. A setback similar to what we see with the Fox Valley Commerce Center, what was Hillwood, that, that's what we were hoping for, we, we wanted a buffer zone along Kirk. I supported the Hillwood effort, and they were extremely attentive to their neighbors to the west. I made a few requests and they went overboard to comply. So, okay, what's wrong with this type of buildup? It's a truck-intensive warehousing in the wrong location. I have no problems with this builder, he probably builds the best warehouse, you know, I, I have nothing to refute that. I'm just very, very concerned about the location. And this location, again, this is going to be one of the biggest warehouses in the area, and it's not in an industrial park, it's on Kirk Road. In this quaint little town, which I hope still includes the East Side, we keep winning awards for being so inviting to the family atmosphere, the charm. And that's why the residents don't want the poor aesthetics of these massive block-plus-long buildings with trailers facing the main roadway. A former all-the-person said, when you drive through Geneva, you should immediately know you are in Geneva, and you shouldn't have to do something just because a neighboring community is doing it. The residents don't want the docks and trailers facing the main thoroughfare, in this case Kirk Road. Now, they can't change that plan because they want to build one huge building. And they say that that's the thing that most likely people are gonna want. Well, I have a little, I, I have some concerns about that because then all the other buildings that you've got going up or that have already gone up, including possibly twelve in, in the MIF, are all the smaller buildings, so do we have a problem there? Increase, we don't want the increased truck traffic. What if this is a cross-dock facility? And that's, that's the biggest problem that I'm very, very concerned about. How do we not know, since they do not have a tenant, how do we know that this is not a cross-dock facility? The layout is that of a cross-dock facility. And the applicant sent this would be one of the largest warehouses in the area. We don't want the diesel pollution across from and to the side of open-air restaurant establishments, across from public venues where our kids go. And we don't want the excessive truck noise. And do we really need any more warehouses? If this project were to get approved, Geneva would be approaching, and I put a nice little spreadsheet together because I wanted to see where are we at? We're gonna be approaching close to five million square feet of available warehousing. Right now, I know of three that are sitting empty for how long? And this is in a time when the market is actually tapering off. What the residents do want is residential, we need affordable housing in Geneva, this is one of the last big sites left. What is meant by affordable, I'm not talking just about subsidized housing, but housing for starting families, for seniors, so that they can afford to stay living here in Geneva. Commercial stores, we badly need stores on the East Side, they said, well, there's no, you know, there's nobody for it. Well, there's a whole bunch of people on the East Side, believe it or not. And why do we have to always go to Randall Road or neighboring communities for everything? We have a desert of rest, of stores on the East Side. We would like to see restaurants, to support the sports-themed facilities already here. People that visit the Cougar Stadium or the Ice Ring, I typically, I, I used to work in Schaumburg and knew a lot of people that lived in that area, they used to love coming to Geneva, they'd go to the Cougar Stadium. I had several that were in the league at the Ice Arena, and they go, what's wrong with Geneva? We come out and there's no stores, I mean, no, no restaurants, there's nothing to go to. I know we have the McDonald's, but if you hadn't been in the city before and you hadn't gone down thirty-eight, you wouldn't know it was there. And we've got a Wendy's that's down a hill that you, unless you're looking for it, you may not even know it's there. We'd like to see some office research, medical, and what about the sports entertainment-related businesses? Why aren't we building upon that theme? That just seems like such, you know, we've got Third Street, we've got Geneva Commons, but we never, ever mention, we've got all these sports-related theme businesses on the East Side. For these reasons, I don't feel the project is proposed on this parcel of property conforms to the nature and character of the city or what it was originally intended by the strategic plan. Now I'll, I'll address a few, I'll try to go over very briefly over some of the documentation that was provided. Under this zoning map amendment, it says existing uses of property somehow add up, well, it talks about existing uses of the property, and what I'm asking is, how does it add up to mega warehouse? Right now, the subject property, upon annexation, is rural, single-family residential. The comprehensive plan calls out for it to be commercial. What I don't understand, to the north, west, and south, we have the Kane County Cougars, we have the Striker Soccer Club, we have the Fox Valley Ice Arena, we have the Country House Restaurant, we have the Comfort Inn and Suites Hotel, we have two churches, a telecommunications sites, two commercial office buildings, and several residential properties and farmland. Can somebody please explain to me how this all adds up to just supporting warehousing? That, that's my question. The property and zoning change is suitable to accommodate industrial. The applicant is working with the Kane County Department of Transportation to ensure safe and efficient traffic conditions. And I think what I heard, it was kind of hard to hear in the back, that a light is probably in the future if they were to move in. But the problem is, we don't know what that building's gonna be used for. If it's just a regular warehouse where X number of trucks are coming out, maybe that's okay. But what if it's used as a cross-dock facility? And it could be, what impacts does that have? The current comprehensive plan for the city Geneva says, says for commercial and not industrial. And then it talks about the plan's transportation goals for this project site. And it, it talks about that signal there coming across from where, where the Ice Arena comes out, which would be directly in line with where their entrance is. And that's again, reference in the site plan approval. I believe that the plan for that roadway and for having that intersection was to go to the Couch Road extension, not just for this site. And I guess, is there any chance that someday in the future, they would be linking their site and the MIF site so that there's a cross-dock and maybe a mega distribution center right behind it? That, that's a question I have in the back of my mind. And under site plan approval, the applicant is requesting a comprehen, or I'll, I'll skip that one. Let's see, adequate provision shall be made to ensure the compatibility of the proposed development, including mass-scale site layout and site design with character of the surrounding property and neighborhood. And then under building design, it says the structures shall be in scale and harmonious with adjoining buildings. They compare their seven hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred square foot building to the Route thirty-eight logistics and the two Fox Valley Commerce Buildings, which range from two hundred and sixty-six thousand to two hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet. First, these are not adjoining, none of these are adjoining to this site. And this building is two times, two point six times larger than those, and larger than the newly-built Batavia Warehouse on Kirk and Fabian. But a point to mention is all the warehouses in Geneva have the good side facing the street and no trailer parking facing the street. And this, their building is one thousand one hundred and sixty feet in length, six hundred and twenty feet deep. Just to understand the scope and scale of that on that, in that area, that's almost a quarter of a mile long. That, that's a big building. And then on top of it, it's up on a hill, it, it's gonna look massive. The scope of the twenty-one built and planned buildings that we have, either that we built already in Geneva or that are in the docket with MIF and the, the other buildings, this would be fifteen percent of the total square footage of all the buildings together, and it would be over three times larger than the average of all the other buildings. So it's a big building. There's a lot of discussion about the southeast area master plan and how it hasn't moved forward, mainly the Settlers Hill, it, it build-out is mentioned repeatedly. So it sounds as if the only alternative is to take what we can get. Didn't we hear the exact same verbiage about the Amazon cross-dock site? And overnight, we got the Bullock project, and the city and the residents can be proud, proud of that. We're, we're really, really hoping that that starts. And the type of pro, and that type of project is a good transition buffer zone. It isn't a truck-intensive warehousing, or potentially a cross-dock, which we don't know. Available land for development, they talk about developers seeking sites between two and a half to five acres in size, in size for affordable housing. City staff says there are eight sites within the city that, that currently meet those specifications. The only problem is, all of them are in existing neighborhoods. Do you really think that's ever gonna happen, trying to get any kind of affordable housing in existing neighborhoods? I think that's gonna be a very difficult thing to have happen. And to say for affordable housing, there is no proximity to grocery stores, parks, and public transportation, hey, welcome to the East Side. And we are not in the inner city of a major metropolitan area. Even lower-income people out here have a vehicle. And again, when we say affordable housing, that doesn't mean subsidized sectioned housing. We are talking about apartments, townhomes, houses for starting families and seniors to live in, so that they can afford to stay in Geneva. And yes, this property size is suitable for a commercial development, as demonstrated in the graphs that were provided. But if that is a problem, if they can't, if they don't think they can get enough in, what about a mixture of commercial and housing? My comments, I would, first of all, I was a little dismayed that the applicant did not address or do anything to try to meet any of our, any of the residents' previous concerns. In fact, they, I noticed that a wall was mentioned last time so that we wouldn't view the trucks, the trailers being parked. That seems to be totally gone. I mean, do you really think that trees and bushes are going to completely do that? That's a big question on my part. The drawings they provided don't give a true perspective of what will be seen from Kirk Road or the Rookie's Sports Bar and Grill. No backend of trailers are seen in those drawings, and the true perspective of the warehouse on a hill, thirteen to fourteen feet higher than Kirk Road is not given. And the building and trailers are much closer to the roadway on the north end. A S-curve entrance exit, that's where they're talking about the light, off of Kirk Road, leads immediately to an incline to go up the hill to their site. In bad weather, what impact will this have on trucks and cars entering and leaving the property? Jobs, well, these are not going to be the high-paying jobs people need to live in this community. And the big push in the warehouse industry for the next four years is to eliminate many of the warehouse jobs with robotics. And what will the aesthetics and intensive truck traffic do to the livelihood of the existing neighboring businesses? At the last P and Z meeting concerning this project, one of the commissioners said the amount of traffic from commercial development could be the same or more, and I think we heard that again today. That is true, but you're overlooking one huge point. This is trucks versus autos, and autos from commercial establishments taper down in the evening. Trucks from a cross-dock warehouse facility could operate twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year. There was a brief mention of zoning codes, and, and it, it showed what Naperville had done and what we have here in Geneva. And Naperville basically changed their zoning codes to no longer include fulfillment or cross-docks in their light industrial. In Geneva, under our I-one light industrial, we call out for industrial warehousing office, business service, and compatible commercial uses that do not create appreciable nuisance or hazards at the, or that require a pleasant, hazard, and nuisance-free environment. My question is, are we meeting those last two requirements in this area? Again, it's not an industrial park. So in my, in conclusion, most of us move to Geneva for the quaint, peaceful atmosphere. The residents on the East Side are realistic of the fact that industrial, including warehouses, will be built along the most eastern edge of the city. will be built along the most eastern edge of the city. Personally, I don't have any problems with that, and that is where it belongs. But please keep the immediate Kirk Road corridor to be something that conforms with the existing Geneva atmosphere we moved here for. Kirk Road is heavily used by people traveling from Elgin to Aurora for work, people coming to the Cougar Stadium and other, our other sports venues, people going to the Outlet Mall in, I believe that's North Aurora, and in the future to the Gambling Casino. There's a lot of traffic. Next to Randall Road, I would say Kirk Road is probably the busiest. Unfortunately, it's seeing a lot more truck traffic. I think we need to really take a look what we're doing here. As they pass through Geneva, all these cars, this corridor has so much potential for commercial development that could also maintain the Geneva charm. What we don't need is a quarter-mile-long, truck-intensive warehouse building that will greatly add to truck traffic, pollution, and noise. When you enter Geneva, yes, you should immediately notice you are in Geneva and not in some industrial park with mega warehousing. I respectfully request that the commissioners do the right thing for Geneva and vote nay to the four things that are on the docket. I greatly appreciate your time and dedication to this board, and hope you will listen to what the community wants before making your decision. This is a concern for all of Geneva. We also hope you appreciate the time the residents have put in into this, countless hours. I have some very dedicated, talented, and good neighbors. Believe it or not, we are not all at the planning and zoning committee, meeting tonight, because we have nothing better to do on a damp Thursday evening. We are not in this for monetary reasons. We are here because we care about Geneva, the place we call home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Who'd like to speak next?
Good evening. My name's John Dashner. I live on the east side as well. I've talked a couple of times here at this forum. A couple of points that I think really need to be addressed. The traffic study needs to really be delved into. I think it's important that the applicant bring his traffic study consultant in and address the traffic that is currently occurring, not looking at the book or the standard that the traffic industry uses, but actually do a traffic study today. I think if you sit at Kirk and Roosevelt Road for any length of time, you'll notice the number of trucks that are passing through, and I'm not sure that it's all just relevant. I think it's so relevant to this particular development. I think also, it needs to be specifically addressed. Don't let them say, while we've done this traffic study, we're using the industry standards, and it's going to be okay. I think we really need to have a very specific study and understand exactly how much this huge building is going to be impacting on our daily lives. I don't think they've really taken that into account, and I think you guys need to really delve into that. I think there is a bit of concern on the, on the, on the citizen's side for the number of trucks and the particulate matters that are being generated for our children. I know that these folks don't live in our town. We do. And I think it's important that we look to the future and understand what these structures are going to be impacting, and how they're going to be affecting our children, and how they will be addressed. I think it's important, and I think it's really critical to understand what this building is going to bring to our, to our town. The applicant doesn't even address the sustainability goals that you and the city, and the city folks have committed to. We don't have an idea of if we're putting solar up on the, on that huge building. Think about how much energy that might be able to generate. Haven't talked about that. Haven't talked about any of the electric stations that are going to, that could possibly be used for people that are coming in and using that, or working in that particular facility. I think there's a commitment by the city to utilize and look at sustainability and also the environment, and I don't think we've really looked at that with this particular program. There's no changes from the last time. There's none. All they've done is, is given us the same gruel that we had originally. And I think that we made the right decision the first time, and I think we need to make the same decision this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to speak? Sir, before you get started, I'll have to swear you in.
Okay.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you.
My name is Mark Sartell. I live at 548 Lexington Drive. And as some of the other people here tonight, I've been here numerous times over the last two to three years. And I just have a couple of brief comments, beginning with the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan and to the zoning map, because I think that's where this all starts, is how the commission views the use of this land ultimately. But I'd like to just hit a couple of points that the petitioner lays out in the proposal. Number one, under comprehensive plan amendment, under the SEP amendment to the comprehensive plan in 2012, this property was designated for commercial uses with the goal of creating a commercial, entertainment, and retail node that would provide services for the nearby Kane County sports venues. And I would note that in requesting the amendment to the comprehensive plan, the petitioner stipulates that the proposal would, quote, "meet the plan's transportation goals for the southwest quadrant of the sub-area." And then the only reasons they cite in meeting these transportation goals is that the goals include the development of signalized intersections at Kirk Road and Fox Valley Arena, and the completion of the Dawn Boulevard access point along Fabian. So again, they're just talking about access to the property. Part two, under the zoning map amendment, the petitioner stipulates the following four reasons for zoning map amendment. Number one, because there's no single land use prominent in this portion of the community, they state that a variety of new uses could be suited to the area. Well, evidently, the petitioner feels that the introduction of a 719,000 square foot warehouse would be a good use for the land bordered by sports complexes, two restaurants, residential properties, a church, and a couple of commercial office buildings, and thus a great fit for the surrounding existing businesses. Two, since there's a variety of zoning classifications within the general area, the petitioner feels that the proposed L1 light industrial zoning classification could be supported. Again, I ask, how does a monstrous warehouse fit into the surrounding area with vastly different land uses regardless of how they're currently zoned? Number three, the suitability of the property in question to the uses permitted under the existing zoning classification, as well as the proposed zoning classification. The developer acknowledges that the default current zoning classification for the property in question is rural, single-family residential, but that modifying the current zoning classification from rural residential to I-1 would be justified, or L1 should be justified merely because the roadway network surrounding the subject site has the ability to accommodate the anticipated traffic generated from the proposed development. They conclude that by stating that, quote, "the subject site would be considered suitable to accommodate industrial zoning and associated permitted areas," end quote. The traffic study submitted by the petitioner uses data, as John pointed out, from July 18, 2022. So the data is already two years old, and based on the current and new warehouse and commercial businesses being developed in the surrounding area, the current traffic volumes on a daily basis in May 2024 are significant, significantly higher. I would encourage any of the commissioners who haven't done so recently to drive up and down Kirk Road between Fabian and Route 38 during peak morning hours and peak afternoon hours to see what the real volume is now without introducing hundreds more truck trips daily into the mix if a proposed warehouse like Venture Park is allowed to be constructed. Number four, the current comprehensive plan for the city of Geneva. The city SEP identifies the site as commercial and would not support the proposed zoning map amendment that requests L1 light industrial district. However, their logic is that if the site would be reclassified from rural residential to L1 light industrial, then the proposed building would align perfectly with that zoning classification. And they go on to once again say that the proposed site aligns with the city comprehensive plan's transportation goals with completion of signalized intersections at Kirk and Fox Valley Arena and at the Fabian-Dawn Boulevard intersection. Lastly, the proposal cites the further, cites the following as justification for a potential zoning map amendment by stating, quote, "Furthermore, a large portion of the land to the east of the subject site is proposed to be industrialized for the plan, and the proposed project would be compatible with future industrial development." Well, it was a bit of a mystery for us after the Planning and Zoning Commission denied the request last August 24th, that Venture One did not come back sooner with a revised petition. They just kind of disappeared for a period of time. And it wasn't until tonight that I understood that they were recontracting with the landowner. But it's kind of interesting to us, as we look at this whole thing play out on the east side, that it was not until after the P&amp;Z's approval of the MIF application for the 297-acre site just to the east of Venture Park, and subsequent recommendation from the P&amp;Z to the city council, that Venture One suddenly reappeared to submit its application. So the door's been opened on the east side with MIF. And I know that the TIF and approval of that has to still go before the city council, but the door's been opened. So the conclusion is, for me, it's been a long-term goal of the citizens to slow down the process of development on the city SEP amendment to the comprehensive plan to review carefully what types of business a city like Geneva should be trying to attract for commercial development on the Kirk Road corridor through Geneva, particularly on the corner of Kirk Road and Fabian Parkway, which has been zoned commercial. We have not absolutely, we do not absolutely oppose warehouse development on the east side of Geneva, but we've been emphatic about not clogging up the commercial corridor by building warehouses right up to the, right away of Kirk Road, as well as to further investigate how the subject property could still be developed commercially to provide support services, support services, not only to the nearby sports complexes, but to employees of nearby businesses and future, future businesses, including warehouses in the area. The Venture Park site is, is an extremely valuable piece of land for the city of Geneva to develop properly, which will serve the entire Geneva community for decades to come. Let's not squander that last remaining undeveloped land on our eastern gateway of the city by allowing either unneeded, allowing another unneeded, unwanted mega warehouse to create more noise, pollution, and traffic ties, so it will impact our entire community, not just the east side. We are one community after all, aren't we? With that, I'll conclude, but thank you very much for your consideration, and we just ask that you carefully consider what's done with that piece of land before it's gone, and the future of Kirk Road is in jeopardy.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to give testimony tonight? Okay, nobody else wants to speak? All right, seeing no one. Sir?
Just got to do one thing here real quick. So at least it's up there, so we can talk about it. First of all, I want to address a lot of the comments, and I appreciate the comments, because our job is to try to figure out how to work together and be a part of the community. If we can't, then you won't approve it, and we won't build here, and that'll be okay. I mean, I, we would like to do something here, but it has to fit within the community's needs and what you want to see. The one thing we did change, which my partner over there reminded me of, is that there were comments about visibility and sound from Kirk Road, and we are planning on putting a fence up along the berm area there. That would be a sound fence that would run all along Kirk Road. So that, that was one of the comments that was made at the last meeting, and so we adjusted that by adding that fence there. So that's on the current plan. I apologize for, not mentioned generally. Yes, I apologize for that. Just by definition, I know people hear the term cross-dock, and people think of cross-docks like truck terminals. This is not a truck terminal. This building is, you know, approximately 650 feet, I think, wide, or maybe 620. And, and that's a standard width for a building of this size. And companies will come in and they'll either bring product in on one side for receiving and ship out on the other side for, for, for sending product out, and it's a flow-through operation. A cross-dock typically is 100 to 100, a standard cross-dock that by definition is 100 to 120 feet wide, and they never store any product in the building. You know, in this, in this, in this building, it will be a functional operating facility for a corporation, where they'll be, they'll bring product in, they may do some assembly, they may do some, you know, light assembly in the building, and, and, and some warehousing and distribution, but it's not an in-and-out facility like the definition of cross-dock. That's just not what it's designed to be. And, and I wouldn't want that here if that was the case. And, and I just want to point that out. Someone said, would we connect to the, the project to the east? And we have no desire to connect to the project to the east. And, and I don't think that Geneva wants us to either. So all of our access would be off Fabian and Kirk. There would not be a road or whatever that goes to the east from here to connect with the other project. Regarding trailer parking on the west side of the building, from our perspective, our, our building sits up pretty high, and if you're on Kirk Road or you're across the street and you look up, you'll have, our building sits up high, but the berm is higher than the road. On top of that will be the, the trees and the landscaping, plus the fence. So we don't think from the road, you'll see the trailers at all. And I have my civil engineer did the site plan review, and we can pull that up there, but the sightline visibility from Kirk Road and to the west of Kirk Road, you will not see any trailers. I know we're parking in there, but they won't be visible. Just can't see through a berm, you know, or, or a solid fence. So I think we've addressed that in our latest plan. Today's, I don't know how many people work here in industry, but, you know, we, we build buildings for, for lots of companies, whether it's a steel company, or a retail company, or a consumer company like Scott's Miracle World. The, the buildings that we built are not the buildings of 50 years ago. They're automated, the pay schedule's significantly better than just being a person working in a warehouse of 50 years ago. And, and they're computerized. We've done nine Amazon buildings, and they're conveyors and computerized, and, and the training level for their employees is significantly higher. You know, we don't envision that here, but, but, but that's, the, the workers in today's industry are very different than the workers from 50 years ago or 30 years ago, in terms of just their education, how they're trained, and their, and, and what they're paid. I do have my traffic engineer here, so I'd like you to step up just one minute, you are Bill. But we did a traffic study. It was required of us from Kane County. So, and I'm, I'm going to ask the question, but when we did our traffic study, we did actual counts. We didn't take them from some study, right?
On the roadways, we did count up there.
Sir, could you please identify yourself?
I'm Andrew Bone with KALAWAY. Yeah, we did traffic counts in 2022 on, at several nearby intersections determining the actual volumes on those roadways.
Okay, so now, you do that, but then you say, okay, it's 2022. But then going into the future, how do you account for the vacant land that's around there, other potential development? Do you incorporate that into your plan in any way?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not an expert in this, I'm asking.
We are aware of many of the projects in the area, and those projects were accounted for in the background projections. In addition, we use-- for in the background projections. In addition, we use CMAP, which is a iDOT organization that projects growth in the entire Chicago area. And they gave us an estimate that they have for just general ambient growth. We use those together to determine a base for the future that incorporates a variety of things, so that we're, we're looking at all factors, and then adding our development on top of that, and not just looking at existing conditions.
And then we submitted that, since this is a county road, to Kane County, and, and they looked at it, and they agreed with our study, that it was done properly, and they've used it in determining whether or not there's a signal needed, what our, what our, you know, access is to our property, how it should be designed in and out. So we didn't just make up a traffic study and just pick information from some previous study from years ago. We did actual counts. We spent, you know, spent the time and effort to do that, and then we, we hired an, an expert to project forward what this could mean for the area going forward. So I wanted to make sure that that was addressed here from the quality of our work. I, I do want to talk about sustainability. It's really important to us. You know, again, you, you know us from buying a few buildings in the area, and we haven't developed anything here in Geneva, but we're, we're, we're fully aware of the benefits of sustainability in our projects. Two years ago, we were approached by a company called DB Shanker, if you've heard of them, but they're a very large international third-party logistics provider. And we didn't know who their client was at the time, we do now, and they wanted us to build them a 350,000-square-foot building in one of our business parks in Winnebago County, out near the Rockford Airport. And we started working on it, and they said to us, we want you to try to build this to a LEED gold standard. I'm sure you know what LEED is. And it's, it's, it's a rating system by the federal government. And LEED gold is extremely difficult to, to hit. You need to put solar panels on the roof, you need special lighting, toilets, water systems. Our civil engineer Bill designed special detention ponds. I mean, it's, it's a point system. After we were awarded the project, they came to us and said, you know what, we don't just want LEED gold, we want LEED platinum. That's like taking an airplane from 10,000 feet to 50,000 feet. You know, it's, it, it's easy to get to 10,000, getting to 50,000, you need a special plane. I mean, so we had to really change our entire philosophy, and we delivered LEED platinum to them. It was really important to us, it was important to our partners, it was important to their client, which was Microsoft. And this is the, only the fourth LEED platinum industrial building in the country. So if you think of all the industrial buildings in the entire United States, there's only four of them that are LEED platinum. And we delivered the fourth one this year for Shanker and Microsoft. So from the prospectability of sustainability, how you design a site properly, there's a lot of things that we do in, in just our basic design of the building. This building will have light fixtures, and I've got my civil engineer here, Bill, but our lighting around the site will be zero at, off-site. So we have to have lighting in our trailer parks, but we'll have zero off-site lighting because of the way that we're blocking light. Our detention ponds will be designed in a way to be sustainable. And, and that's important to us, and we do that with all the buildings we build. Now, do we go for LEED gold or platinum on all our buildings? No. But do we put sustainability factors in all of our buildings? Absolutely yes. And then the last thing is, you know, truck traffic. We, we, you could do a smaller building concept here of two or 300,000 square foot buildings. You know, you can split them down to 20 and 50,000 square foot of space. But in a lot of cases, in, in that case, you could have significantly more employee traffic, you could have more even truck traffic, because those small buildings still have in-and-outs. They might have vans and not big trucks, but they're, they're, they're creating just as much or more traffic than a building of, of this scale. So I, I, I think that as a developer in your community, we're really proud of what we've accomplished for, whether or not it's a Microsoft or an Amazon, and how we built their buildings. Amazon requires us to have sustainability in all of our buildings. They're, they're very, it's, it's very, very important to them as well. So we have that on our team to be able to do that. You know, I, I, I think that from a practical perspective, this is a property that's been available for many, many years. It's been owned by the same family for many, many years. They've selected us as their partner to, to buy this and, and build in their community, and, and we appreciate that. But from our perspective, we think that, again, we can build this where it, it will have very little visibility from Kirk Road. The, the light, I think, will control traffic, which is needed, I think, currently there. And, and, and we're adding a little bit to that, but I think it's needed anyways right now. And I think it'll, it'll be a good fixture in the community. And, and I think when it is completed and the landscaping is done along Kirk Road and Fabian, you know, it will be a, a model in the area, because, you know, Kirk Road is a major thoroughfare. And I don't know how many people want to live on, you know, right on Kirk Road, you know, it's, it's, it's still a major truck route and thoroughfare. But this type of project, I think, could be very successful in the community. I hope I've addressed all the issues. I tried to write them all down. But, you know, I, I would think that from, from our perspective, we're happy to try to meet the goals of Geneva in our design process. We're happy to meet sustainability goals as we, as we go through the process with the community, and, and really help this project fit into what can be a really great development in Geneva. So I don't want to answer any more questions if you have them.
I have one additional question for you. Is there any way that that facade, the west side, can be broken up? I'm not talking about multiple buildings, but is there anything that you can do design-wise?
Of course.
That would make it look less intimidating?
Yeah, we build, we build large buildings, you know, for hands-on others, and that's a question asked in every community that we're in. And so the way you do that is you, these are, these are precast panels, and they're 40-foot clear, they're 45, 50-foot panels?
Yep.
Yeah. And so what we do with that is we can inset them a little bit. You know, we'd be working with staff on this, but what you do is you have one panel here, and then the other one offset a little bit. Some would go up maybe two, three feet higher, some would be a little lower. So at the, at the parapet level, you could vary the height. We use color and design and li, and lines in there for, for breaking them up. And that's a requirement in every community we go into, so that's a fairly standard question we get asked. And so depending on the community, we'll work with them to set, and that's just not on the Kirk Road side. We'll do that, you know, around the building, because the users would want that, because they, you don't want to just, I, I'll, I'll ask the question you, you don't just want to see a wall of concrete, okay? I don't want to see it in my buildings. If you look at the buildings we build, you don't want to see it. So we design them in a way with our architects and our civil engineer to break it up, and, by using structure and using a paint system.
But I don't see any of that in what you're saying.
We don't have our, our elevations that are here, I can go to them. Again, this is not, if you look at, well, if you look at this, we have different color paint, we have different breakouts. You know, panels can be inset, you know, depending on how the break hits. We have clear-story windows all around the building for light inside the building. That's also a sustainability issue. So how we set that up and how we use that design, you know, this is, this is just one elevation. The next iteration, we'll be working with staff to really try to figure out the right way to set it up. But, but we do that kind of a breakup. I don't know if we have any other pictures here. Not really. But that's the way we do it. We, we try to do it by breaking up our panels, by using color, and, and it works pretty well. We can't make them different heights. I mean, the, the ceiling height in the whole building has to be the same, but we do it with our panels on the outside.
Some examples even from elsewhere, photos of.
I can, I can work with staff on that. We've done that with a lot, a lot of our buildings. We've done that.
We don't see this again, though, after tonight.
Unless we continue.
Unless we continue it, but I mean, we're.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, if, if you decide to close the public hearing and vote.
We don't see it again.
Correct.
I'm trying to recap any examples. I mean, the one we have here is, is, is just our first shot at it, which is putting in, now, this is brown, it's not, we, we do blue, we do red, we do different colors. We've done green for, you know, depends on the users. We sometimes use our logos to highlight it. So it does break up the wall quite a bit to do that. And, and that's usually a request from the communities we develop in. So it's a good question.
Michael?
Just on that question, like, I guess, Dave, does, does the city have any requirements that, that plane, on plane changes for, you know, so many linear feet of building elevation?
We don't have anything in, in the industrial district to that effect, no.
Thanks.
But, but I would say this, when we go in front of staff, we can't get a permit to bill without approval for our site plan and our building. So I'm assuming that you would have some input into, no, all the communities we go into have some input into our site plan and, and our, when we get to that level of permitting.
If, if the commission wanted to recommend any conditions of approval, that there are varying parapet heights or insets of the panels, we could, we can make sure that that is enforced at the permit stage.
And we would be okay with that. You know, we, we want this to work.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Yes, John?
Can we just focus a little bit on your yellow wall for a second, the change that you made for tonight?
Sure.
And I'm going to flip between a couple different slides.
Uh-oh, I hit a button. I shouldn't have hit.
I'm going to go to the site plan with the yellow wall, and then I would also like to go to the, to the civil engineer's drawing of the sightline from Kirk Road to the building height.
All right. Bill's here, so he put that together. So, so this is, this is the fence that we're putting in here. So if you can address what that, what it, what it's meant to happen.
Sir, just please identify yourself.
Sure. William Bone with Jacob and Hefner Associates.
Yeah, so the yellow line up there is a fence.
Right.
You know, we're thinking eight feet, eight-foot-high board-on-board fence that'll be on top of a berm with landscaping in front of it.
And if I recall correctly, the landscaping on top of the berm was going to be eight-foot evergreens, so comparable in height. We're not gaining any additional height blockage, but it's going to be a continuous panel.
Correct. Correct.
Could we go to the site, the slide that shows the sightline from Kirk Road to the building top? There you go. So it will be, I'm assuming it's going to be on or around or adjacent to the evergreens we see on, on that.
It's actually in this, in this drawing, it's, it's next to the trailer.
Oh, okay. So you're, so it won't be on.
It'll be right off the back.
Won't be on the landscape berm, it'll be on the, the, up closer to the building.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And eight feet compared to the top of a trailer is what, is the trailer 12 feet or just?
Correct.
It's not fully blocking a trailer.
Well, but, but you have to look at the perspective, where it's sitting so much higher than Kirk Road. So if you see the dash line, that's from an individual on Kirk Road. Let's say you're standing there.
Right. Understood.
That, that sightline, you, you know, if you're looking over the first berm and the first set of landscaping.
Right.
You're, you're not going to see the trailer.
I'm going to catch the top of the building, but you're telling me I'm not going to see any of the parked trailer.
Right, because right here is where the trailer is. You can see that little dash line there.
So what's the purpose of the wall, then, if no one can ever see it? I'm just.
Sound.
Okay, sound is one thing.
Well, also, we were asked to improve our plan from land, from just having trees. Trees have gaps in them.
Right.
So we've used, we have, we have, we have fences in a lot of the different projects we do that are on.
Okay.
Major roads. And it, and we, and we still do evergreens. And you like, want to do evergreens because they're, they're, they're full all year round.
Right. Exactly.
So we do evergreens.
Okay. Can you go back to the site plan one more time with the yellow wall? And one of the things I'm struggling with, and I struggled with last time, was the perception of whatever it is, 40, 43 or 48 dock doors facing Kirk Road. We're trying to mitigate that with the berm, we're trying to mitigate that with the wall. When I went to the site the other day, I was parked going east on Fabian and stuck in the, in the left-hand turn line waiting the turn, and I found myself looking. And so from that angle, I'll, no matter what you do, unless you build a wall over your retention ponds, I'm going to see probably 40% of the building and dock doors from, from that far away at that intersection.
What are you talking about? Right?
You're talking about the intersection?
If you, yeah, the bottom right, bottom right-hand, I, I'm not seeing your mouse, but the bottom.
You can use, there's the laser pointer there, too, if you need to, guys.
Is this a laser?
Yeah, the red kind of top button there.
You're going to make me turn around.
Here.
Yeah. I mean, so, so what we have, well, the distance, I don't know the distance, but it is higher. We do have evergreens, I think, that are going to be around our ponds. We do that on a regular basis.
Do you have the landscape plan?
Yeah, we do. I still don't know where it is.
Yeah, and I'm sure the height differential or anything else, but I found myself looking that way, thinking, no matter what they do on the berm, I'm going to see a good portion of the building and the dock doors and trailers parked.
All right. So, yeah, this is the south, this is our southwest corner. North is, is the plan, right?
Okay. Sure.
So you see our detention basin, like, so if you're, if you're looking from the top-left corner of the page towards the building, you've got to look past one, two, basically two rows of landscaping and over those two ponds, so.
Is there an, can you give me any idea of what the elevation is at the points of the landscaping compared to Kirk Road? Just to, does it, I know it rises up, because you'll gain some benefit as well from, from that. Do you have any idea? There's a topography drawing or somewhere in there.
Yeah, if you go back to the sightline, it'll, the sightline drawing has it.
I'm, and I'm just going back to the point that this is, coming from the south, this is the gateway to the community. So the first impression, and let's not have this staring at, at folks as, as they're on Kirk Road.
It's probably five to six feet higher at that point.
Kirk Road is, or?
No, Kirk Road's lower. I'm sorry, where the landscaping's going to be at that corner.
So we'll be five feet higher than what landscaping on a berm would be.
Right. Where the landscaping's at will be five to six feet higher.
So that, the retention pond or detention pond is, is the horizontal line, the bluish line, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then you're saying that the slope around the parking lot on the back side of the pond and the front side of the pond will be landscaped?
Correct.
So that might be something, if we were considering some things to, to, you know, beefing up some landscaping.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the lan, our landscape plan, we have, and it's hard to see at this scale, but I mean, I, you know, I couldn't count the amount of trees we're planting, especially, especially along, along Kirk. You know, again, every one of those circles is, you know, a combination of, you know, deciduous and, and an evergreen tree, along with, along with shrubs along that, that whole line there. So it's, it's going to be very thick. And certainly on day one, they're smaller, right?
Right.
You know, another reason to put the fence up, as Mark said, there's gaps. But, you know, as they grow, you know, there's, there's that time period that we still want to have that screening, you know, and that's another purpose of the fence.
Okay. Thank you.
And what's the proposed material of the fence? Just wondering aesthetically what it was.
We've, we've traditionally done Trex. It's like a, it's a, you know, like a.
PVC.
Yeah, like, sorry, I couldn't think of the word, composite. Yeah, it's like a, it's a very durable, we can pick the color with staff of, of, of what it, you know, what color it is. It'll be board-on-board, so there won't be any gaps. It's definitely not chain link. And it's, it's very durable and low maintenance, so it's, it's a composite material.
So it's full, solid?
Correct. Yes, correct.
And it acts as a good sound wave for all.
Okay, thank you.
Those are the way it's set up.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Yes? I have some questions for staff, so I don't know whether that's more appropriate to, if the public hearing's closed, to have those or not, what the timing should be.
I mean, it's, it's probably okay to, if you want to close, you know, the public hearing, if you feel comfortable closing the public hearing, we could move to commissioner deliberation, and then we can answer questions. But if you want to keep it open for any reason, we could.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. I would move to close the public hearing. There's a reason to keep it open, open to that.
I see no reason.
All right. Then, move to close the public hearing. Evans?
Second, Slavka.
Move in second. Anna, please call a roll.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slavka?
Slavka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye. Ben, you want to start with your question? Sure. Yeah. First, there's four different actions requested. Could you refresh for me the relationship between these four different actions, how they, each one affects the next, exactly what we're doing here?
So the first one is the annexation, which this commission does not vote on. The second one would be the comprehensive plan amendment to, basically amend it from commercial to industrial, or, yeah. And then the third one would be the, the zoning map amendment to, if annexed, it would be zoned RR, rural residential. We would then be rezoning it to. We would then be rezoning it to the industrial district. And then the final one is the, the site plan review.
So if we were to grant, we don't have the, we don't do the annexation, but if we were to do number two and number three, and then it were to be annexed, it's immediately rezoned? And then does a project like this become a use by right? Not this necessarily project, but any future project that were to come in on this scale?
I mean, yeah, it'd be subject obviously to the, you know, the regulations in the zoning district.
Right.
Any project would also have to come before the commission for site plan review. But yes, it would be theoretically by right if they weren't requesting any variations or anything.
So we talked about housing and how affordable housing generally, the developers are looking for much smaller sites than this. We need housing in this town, even if it isn't technically affordable housing. There's housing, housing needed everywhere, at every price point, at every level of density. A piece of property this large seems relatively easy to develop into some kind of new subdivision. Have we thought about the opportunity cost of eliminating maybe the only site left that could be in the city that could be a new subdivision or significant housing development?
Yeah, I think it's a good question. Obviously, the site has been sitting vacant for a fair number of years. It's part of the southeast, you know, area master plan, where that plan has outlined it for commercial or even industrial uses. I think the city has, you know, that general area has been planned for a while, and residential has not been something that the city has thought would be, you know, a viable option in that location.
Given the residential market today, the situation has changed drastically from, in so many ways, from when this plan was made. Relevance of the plan can be somewhat called into question. This type of, of operation that we're discussing here today wasn't even in anybody's minds at that point, and certainly the shortage of housing at that time. Geneva was full of new subdivisions that were going up on cornfields out on the west side primarily, whether they were in the incorporated city or outside of it. So I think that the, it's difficult based on this plan to, to make a judgment as to what the best use of this site might be now or within the relatively short-term future. And that is my biggest concern, is tying up this site with this particular kind of use and whether or not it's in the best interest in the long run of the city of committing to an additional warehouse-type project and eliminating the ability to continue to balance the development of the city.
That's good. Do you have a point?
I do.
Okay.
That may be, but that's not what you're being asked to decide tonight. You have to confine yourself to the issues that are before, the relevant elements that are within the various classifications. And whether this should be something else, that's not a factor that this body is being asked to decide.
Well, I, I certainly respect your opinion, and you know way more than I do, but.
Don't assume that.
But a comprehensive plan amendment is changing the vision that the community has for a particular piece of property.
That is true, but what you're saying is you don't like the current vision, nor do you like the proposed vision, and you want to propose an additional revision. That's where we, that's a bridge too far.
Okay, so it would not be too far if I said, I'm not clear that the current vision is necessarily wrong, but that I think that we should not necessarily commit to this particular change?
That seems to be more appropriate.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Evans brings up some very valid points, particularly related to the opportunity cost and res, and the residential nature of the, of the project. Taking it back to our request to change the, the master plan, it's been a while since this, it's been hanging around a while with no, little or no interest for commercial. That being said, I'm not sure that industrial, locking ourselves into industrial is the way to go either. So I'm not sold yet that we should change the master plan. That might promote some discussion at the city fathers level of what should the master plan look like over time.
Yeah, I think it's always very hard to, hard to be, be sure, you know, what, what's going to happen in the, in the future, or maybe what the, the best decision is. But I think, you know, the, the lack of, of activity that's happened around this site for, for so long, well, well in advance of the 2012 plan, and the, the actual continued development now of, of industrial sites around it seems to, to me to actually support its use as, as an industrial site maybe more than it, than it did in the past.
I, I think I would have to, I guess, sort of agree with, with them. You know, with the shortage of land in Geneva that we have and the potential of what might be just to the east, coming through just to the east, I feel like that is, could be a game changer for that whole area. And I guess, you know, maybe inviting with the, the different sizes of the buildings and the, the natural area that they're going to be doing and all that kind of stuff, if, if those plans end up coming to fruition, could invite a whole nother type of investor. So I guess it, it concerns me as well to give that much, you know, to allocate and change the plan without giving it a chance to, you know, not, not to be short-sighted, I guess, that, I just feel like that, if that project does come through, it could greatly change that whole area and, and potentially make it more appealing for a different kind of use that's a better fit with the current plan, whether it's commercial or, or maybe even residential. But it's a lot of land. It's big.
Yeah, from my perspective on the last meeting, I said that, you know, I think the alternative uses at that site is possible. It's one of, again, one of the few sites left in the city of any size. So I think its zoning is just fine as it sits. We've had other opportunities where we've had, have kids come in just across from our neighbors on the east side, on Kirk Road, and, you know, there's a lot of industrial property around that as well, and then we wind up with a outstanding development later on. So I don't think, I don't think it's written in stone that this property is an industrial property in my mind whatsoever, especially given the surrounding uses and the fact that it fronts on Kirk, and it's our front door for the community.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we change the comprehensive plan from commercial to industrial for the subject site generally located east of Kirk Road between Old Kirk Road and Fabian Parkway, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Second, Evans?
Beat you to it. Move and seconded. Anna, please call the roll.
Mead?
Nay. Mead, nay.
Evans?
Evans, nay.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, nay.
Stocking?
Stocking, nay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a zoning map amendment upon annexation of proposed project site from RR Rural Single Family Residential to I-1 Light Industrial, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Slivka, second.
Move and seconded. Anna, please call the roll.
Mead?
Mead, nay.
Evans?
Evans, nay.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, nay.
Stocking?
Stocking, nay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, a motion for a site plan approval for the subject property generally located east of Kirk, between Old Kirk Road and Fabian Parkway, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report, and specifically subject to the conditions highlighted by staff. On page 16 of the staff report, number one, final engineering shall be approved prior to building permit issuance by the city. Number two, a revised lighting and photometric plan shall be approved prior to building permit issuance by the city. And three, an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Geneva and Kane County regarding access to Kirk Road and Fabian Parkway shall be executed prior to building permit issuance by the city.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Should we add conditions now in case the council approves the, the first two items that we voted nay on, so that if it does come up, our conditions are attached?
I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah.
Since the recommendation is no, it would be.
Well, we don't know what the recommendation, we haven't voted yet.
Well, but you, you couldn't get there.
To that point.
Because of your previous two votes.
Correct.
It would be inconsistent.
Unless city council.
But if city council gets there.
Went a different way.
I don't think it, I don't think it hurts, and I think you're right. It would be something that the council, at least, would get the benefit of your consideration and your recommending bodies, so I think, I think it's fine. And it's designed to educate the council as to your thought process.
So may I just add?
I get your point, Ben, that they decide to do something different, at least we're on record of what we'd like to see the site plan do.
And further, subject to varying parapet heights and inset panels satisfactory to staff to break up the monotony of the building. And two, landscape in a significant fashion on the southwest corner of the site satisfactory to staff in their discretion. I don't know how else to phrase that, but.
Yeah, I think that was for suspicion. Anything else the commission would like to add? I mean, I think those are the two primary ones we were talking about.
Evans, second?
Move and seconded. Anna, please call the roll.
Mead?
Mead, nay.
Evans?
Evans, nay.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, nay.
Stocking?
Stocking, nay. Okay. Let's go in to council.
All right, so the recommendations here are going to go to council on May 20th. So I'll send out a confirmation, but May 20th will be the official city council date for, for those requests.
All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Thanks for everyone in the public giving testimony. Appreciate it. Our next item is public comment, which is what we do every week, every time we have a planning commission meeting. So anybody in the audience wishing to address the commission is open to do so now. Thank you. Since we do have an audience this time.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it. Anybody wishing to address the commission? This is your opportunity, other than a public hearing. Okay, I don't see anything, so other business.
Matt? All right, couple items for everyone here. First one, just a reminder, we have a, or there was a virtual plan commissioner training available from the Illinois APA. If you guys are interested in signing up, I think we have a couple that have let us, let us know. But if you're interested, please let us know. It is going to be on May 29th. That is a Wednesday, and then it's at night, so it's from 6:30 to 8:30. It's all virtual. There won't be a recording of this one, so they kind of want to encourage live discussion there. If you're interested, please let us know, we will get you signed up for that. Number two, we had the, a variation before us for 501 North First Street, that was a deck. That, the commission recommended approval of that, and that was approved by council. And then, just final note, our next meeting is going to be May 23rd. We'll look to have those packets out to everybody by the end of next week or Monday the week of.
And that's when I will most likely miss.
Okay, that will be out.
The Verizon Tower.
Correct.
What date is that?
That is May, Thursday, May 23rd.
I'll, I'll be here.
Okay. Yeah, if, if anyone can't make it, you know, you find out, just please let me know in advance, and we can. All right, that's all I have.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Ben.